Hey, welcome to this evening's Central Catholic High School Town Hall Meeting. I'm Bruce Sawyer, the principal, and I have with me Kelly O'Connor, our Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction. And I also have Tomas Garcia, who is our Educational Technology Specialist. I'm Bruce Sawyer, the principal, and I have with me. Tonight, we'll share our plan for opening school for the 2020-2021 school year. To accommodate what we hope is a large group, we're using Facebook Live. Please leave any questions you have on the live session post on our Facebook page. Before we get started, I want to share with you a bit of scripture from Deuteronomy, Chapter 31, verse 6. If Kelly could change the. Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid or terrified because of them. For the Lord your God goes with you. He will never leave you nor forsake you. The "them" in this, I feel, is the virus and all of the anxiety and uncertainty that surrounds the pandemic that we're in. We have to remember that God walks with us through us, and He will never forsake us. So please join with me in the Lord's Prayer, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Before we get too far into our plan, I want to go over a little bit of the rationale behind our plan. We believe that we are made for each other in the image and likeness of God. Therefore, we believe we are better together. We want to open on campus fully as soon as we can. If we can't open fully with all of our students, then we'll open in a hybrid model. And if we can't do that, then we'll open in a distance learning model. But that belief does not stop at the school gates. It doesn't stop with the school community. It includes the broader community that makes up Stanislaus County and the Central Valley. If we believe we are made for each other, then we also are responsible for each other. We are therefore planning to open in the most responsible way possible that protects our teachers, our students, and our families. Kelly, if you could move to the next one, please. So because we are made for each other and we're responsible for each other, we have chosen to follow county health department guidelines. And it includes the provision for different kinds of opening. So we have three plans that we have already turned into the county and we've been given the go-ahead. In other words, that we have met the requirements that they have given us. It doesn't give us the... They're not saying we approve the plans. They're just saying that all of the different guidelines that they think are important are in our plan. There are some schools who are looking at a waiver, but right now waivers are not being even considered by the county until later, at the end of this month. And so our school probably wouldn't be able to even apply for one of these waivers because it really has to do with the ability of the school to isolate cohorts of students. In other words, third grade class is self-contained, and we cannot say the same thing about our classes. A student has maybe 25, 20 other kids in his English class, but next period he goes to his math class, and he's going to have another bunch of kids in there. So the waiver, at least right now, is not really an option for us. We want our students back on campus, but the health and safety considerations are our biggest priorities. We'll only open when we determine with the help of the county health department that it is safe to do so fully or even in a hybrid mode. Okay, Kelly, next, please. So we do have health and safety protocols at our school. We are going to be sending out a Google form before the start of school that will have a survey that will give us an idea of what the health status is of our students before we start school. Once we do start school, we're going to do daily temperature checks with the little temperature things where we don't actually have to touch anybody. And so that'll be that kind of screening before we allow any student or adult on campus. We'll have three points of entry onto the campus where that will happen. One will be the southern gate, right next to the football field, where families that want to drop off will pull, or students who are driving in will pull in, and they will be scanned farther in off of Carpenter Road so that we can, hopefully, we can keep it open to traffic. Another point of entry will be the front door of the administration building, where we can also scan people that come in. And then the third point of entry will be past St. Stanislaus Catholic Church and into the back side of the campus by the tennis courts, where we can also do the same thing. Masks will be required in all buildings, classrooms, offices, anytime people are joined together in enclosed spaces. Keep in mind that these protocols are intended for if we come back in a hybrid or a fully-on-campus situation. Okay, Kelly? So we also have a plan for if someone, either an adult or a student, on campus tests positive for COVID-19. And it's a four-point plan where, in other words, I'm going to have to put my glasses on so I can see it because it's kind of small. If COVID-19 symptoms are being expressed by a student or an adult on campus, we have an action plan for that. If we learn that one of our students or staff members was in close contact with a confirmed COVID-19 case, we have an action plan for that. And then if there is a confirmed COVID-19 case infection of one of our students or staff, we also have a plan for that. And finally, once a person tests negative, there will be a plan for that person to be able to return on campus, and it would be three days after the symptoms go away. This can be found on the California Department of Public Health website, and it's also going to be posted on the school's website, too, for anybody's information. We could also post it on the walls in the office, too. And if anybody can't find this through searching for it, let me know, and I can just send it to you. Okay, Kelly? Now it's Kelly's turn.
Thanks, Bruce. Just want to remind everyone that's watching, if you have any questions or concerns, we will address those at the end of the presentation. Just a reminder to type those into the comments on the Facebook Live post. So don't forget, if you have questions that aren't answered in our presentation, please do that. We will address those at the end. So the schedule that we came up with, this is the schedule that's on your screen right now, is the schedule for if we were to be completely distance planned or if we were all back on campus, meaning 100% of the students could return to campus. It allows for 60-minute periods, three times a week per class, so that's 180 minutes per class. It allows for 15 minutes between periods. So students can go outside, remove their masks, socially distance themselves, and have some relief for their masks. And it also allows our teachers to remain in the classrooms and do a cleaning and disinfecting protocol to all the desks so that the next period can come in. And as Bruce mentioned, because we are a high school, this has to be done between every period, and teachers are going to be responsible for that. The elementary schools, they're able to keep the classes all together in one room and have teachers rotate around the room. So we do have to allow time for the structure. All high schools have to do this. We have to allow time to get in there and clean between classes because we can't keep the same group in the same room all day. We also have time at the end of Mondays, Thursdays, and early dismissal on Friday for teachers and students to make an appointment to meet with each other. Right now, if we are in a distance learning model or a hybrid model, smaller groups could meet with teachers, as long as they're wearing masks and the number is at a manageable... If we were all back on campus, this is where we would place that win time, that what I need time for students to come meet with their teachers during their office hours, and those would be posted so you know which teachers have what hours and when they're available in their rooms. Also, on Friday, we've traditionally celebrated First Friday Masses, and those will be celebrated on Friday at 11:30, when we're able to do those. They will be virtually. If we need to do them virtually, and they will be in person as soon as we can celebrate in person. All right, Tomas, next slide, please. All right, this is what our hybrid schedule will look like. And as you can probably tell, it is very familiar because it's the exact same schedule. And the reason that we went with this hybrid schedule is so that we do not need to switch between, we don't have to think about two different models, we don't have to meet with seven classes a day. That's a pretty hefty load for remote learners, especially don't have a bell schedule. It's a little bit harder to stay focused at home, and we know that. And then having a very heavy schedule for our teachers, our previously-posted hybrid schedule had seven periods, four days straight and the day off. So this also allows students to be on campus five days in a two-week period rather than just four days, which the other plan had. So again, it leaves those 15 minutes in between classes because even in the hybrid model, if we were to go to that, we still need to do the cleaning and the health and safety precautions in between periods. Okay, Tomas, next slide. The hybrid model. So this, we are going to be moving into a hybrid model as soon as we can. If we get word from the county that we are able to submit a waiver and we can get kids on campus, we will do that as soon as we can. It is our priority to have our kids on campus. Health and safety is a priority, but we also know that, like Bruce mentioned, that being together and learning together, we're supposed to be, you know, living in communion. So it's important for us, and we will be doing that as soon as we can. The benefits of this is that we can at least have the students on part-time if we're not allowed to have the students full-time. Again, the schedule's easy to transition from a distance model to a distance model, from a full-time model to a distance model. So the reason that we like this is because the schedule remains the same no matter what model we're having to, we're being told that we need to implement. Cohorts, we have blue and gold cohorts. So those will be assigned alphabetically and based on course enrollment. And we obviously will be giving priority to siblings. We know that some people have some extenuating circumstances. We know we have families traveling from Gustine. We have families traveling from Antica and Tracy, and that's quite a bit of a commute. So in extenuating circumstances like that, we will entertain putting people in the same cohort if they're in a carpool, for instance. But because it is our priority to balance classes and make sure this works so that we can all get on campus, we will take those on a base-by-case-by-case basis, those requests. So if there is a situation that you're in like that, then please let us know. We're not taking requests just to be with friends at this point. So our priority is just to split them up as evenly as we can and get everybody here on campus as soon as we can. Tomas? Remote learning. I'm very, very proud to be a part of this team here at Central Catholic High School, and I think we did a pretty amazing job in the spring when we had to jump into remote learning with pretty much the five-days' notice, I think it was. We were told on Friday, we were back in the classrooms virtually on Wednesday. But we also learned a lot. We learned that we have, that we have to have some more uniform protocols so that teachers, so it's easier for teachers, it's easier for families to follow along. And so we learned a lot, and we're going to take what we did really well, and we're going to improve on, and we heard your feedback. We're going to improve on those things we can improve on if we are going to remote learning. Teachers will be expected to have synchronous teaching in every period. This does not mean that we are asking our teachers to be live with their class for 60 minutes. That would be a lot for the teacher. That would be a lot for the students at home. And we believe that students learn best when they're doing. So to sit there and listen to a lecture, for instance, for 60 minutes probably wouldn't be the best use of time if we're trying to have the best learning experience for our students. So know that they will open up each lesson with a live prayer, an introduction, maybe a lecture, maybe a discussion, maybe a Socratic seminar that might take the whole 60 minutes. So there might be situations where they are live for a longer period of time, but we do not expect our teachers, and it probably won't be that our teachers are live for 60 minutes at a time. But we do expect them to start their classes out that way so that they can connect with the students at the beginning of every period. They can see their faces. But they will mix in some asynchronous, I have trouble with these, are asynchronous models, which would be pre-recorded videos. If it's a math problem that the teacher wants to be able to post later for kids to watch over and over again, so that it sinks in because it might be something that some students need over and over again, then that would be an appropriate use of a pre-recorded video. If it's a dance class, Ms. Swiley might be recording those moves so that you can practice. If once she goes off live and she needs those kids at home to practice their routines, then they can do that and watch the video over and over and over and rehearse on their own at home. Digital assignments, so that would be anything in the Google Suite, anything, any apps and programs that the teachers use. We are trying to do as much paperless as we can. So any assignments that have to be on paper, those will be case-by-case. But most of the stuff that the teachers are going to be able to do is going to be digital. And any other learning experiences, where it would be independent practice for the students to be doing at home, that would also be asynchronous. All right, next slide, Tomas, please. And so the student expectations for remote learning. So one of the things we did learn from our distance model is that we just need clearer expectations and uniform things for all students to adhere to. And that is beyond time. So attendance will be taken. They will be on time to be marked present. They need to be logging in at the start of class. Like I said, the classes will start with a synchronous session for prayer, introduction, whatever, just to check in with the students, make sure they understand what they should be doing for that 60-minute period. We will require a dress code. They can wear their CCHS polo, or if they have a t-shirt or a hoodie, as long as the hoodie isn't covering their face, they can wear those, too. So we're allowing a little bit more comfort with the spirit wear, but if you want to wear your polo, you can wear that, too. And we are asking that they sit at a table or a desk for the live sessions. Once they log off and it's not a live session, and they want to, you know, lay down to do their math problems, once they're doing independent practice, that's up to them. But as long as there is a Zoom call going on and cameras can be on, then they need to be sitting up at a desk or a table. They're expected, as always, to turn assignments in on time and adhere to the teacher's norms and procedures that are presented the first couple of days of school. Tomas? The teacher expectations, what can you expect from our teachers? They will all have Google classrooms, so that will be uniform. They will be on campus, teaching from their classrooms, whether we are in distance model, hybrid model, or all back on campus. So obviously, if we're all back on campus in hybrid model, they have to be here. But we are also asking our teachers to be teaching from their classrooms for the distance learning portion. If we're asked to do that in the middle of the winter, when there may be a spike, if we're asked to start that way for a little bit before we can jump into hybrid, the teachers will be here on campus, teaching from their classroom. So at least we can give a little bit more of an authentic experience. We know this is not ideal. We know that we all rather have our students here with us on campus. But what we can do is give them at least a little bit of that experience by having their teachers on campus, teaching from the classroom so that when they do get to come on campus, they know what it looks like and they're familiar with where they're going to be learning from once we can all be back. So we're going to be using webcams, like I said, and we are going to be using Zoom. We researched the differences between Google Meets and Zoom. Zoom allows students, or sorry, Zoom allows teachers to put students into breakout rooms so students can actually be doing collaborative projects and assignments and discussions, even if they're at home. Or if we have the hybrid model, you could have a couple of kids on their device in the classroom and a couple of kids on their device at home, working together on a project. And the teacher can pop in on those group meetings with students. So that was one thing that Google Meets does not have, that was a huge plus. And also Zoom has better safety protocols and filters for those live sessions. And that was one of the things that it was hard for a lot, for everybody in education, I think, in the spring that had to jump into it. And these programs, these live meeting sessions, didn't quite have the security yet, and we had people jumping in on lessons that we didn't know. So there's filters, it's better security for the students, and it allows for a more collaborative environment, even though they're not going to be in the same room. Teachers will be expected to post weekly agendas and assignments at the beginning of the week on Monday. So the assignments and the due dates are known to the students at the beginning of the week, so it will make them plan easier, have an easier, sorry, have an easier time planning their week because we know this can get overwhelming when kids are at home without that bell schedule. So just having that clear communication of what's going to be expected of them every week, starting at the beginning of the week. And the first couple of days, teachers are going to be asked to communicate classroom norms and procedures. And that may be, for an example, that may be when we're in live session, everybody has their cameras on. I want to see your faces. It could be that some of the procedures might be that everybody's microphone is off and you use the chat box, or you have to raise your hand or use emojis to get my attention before you turn on your microphone, things like that, that will be very clear, clearly communicated to the students what they'll need to do once distance learning is in place. And again, I want to repeat this because I think it's really important that every period starts with live introduction from the teacher. So that is why students need to be on time logged in, even for those 8:00 AM classes. All right, next slide. Oh, that's you.
Okay, so we are a Catholic school, and we want to continue to build on our Catholic identity and help our students and parents, too, and faculty, for that matter, to develop in their Catholic formation. So we are planning to have masses, outdoor masses, if we can, if the weather permits, at which we can have up to, I believe, 100 people attending. And if we're going to do something like that, what would end up happening is we could break it up by... So this mass would be for the seniors, and everybody else would be doing virtual. And then the next one would be the juniors, and everyone else would be doing virtual. The next one would be the sophomores and so on, so that we can continue doing those things. We want to have many, many opportunities for virtual masses throughout the week, as far as that goes, whether we are on campus or not. This is going to happen. We are starting with an outdoor mass for the first day that teachers are back on campus. We're still thinking about where it's going to be, but where I want it to be is under the trees next to the chapel. It's nice and shady and beautiful right there. And Father Suresh has offered to do those outdoor masses. We're going to continue with our Christian service opportunities using the Helper Helper app. And Tanya Velazquez, our theology department chair, is in charge of that, and she'll be communicating with the families when it comes to that. Father Suresh will be heading up our campus ministry and planning things for the students, whether it's virtual or in-person, you know, in small groups or whatever he can do there. And then finally, our priority is to continue to observe our holy days and all the school traditions that we can, and special events, even if we have to modify them for the situation that we find ourselves in. But we are going to work hard to continue all those things that make Central Catholic special inside and outside of the classroom. Okay, Tomas? So that is it. Now, I know there are lots of questions that you have, you've been posting. And I have asked Tomas, I don't know if you looked at his text yet, but I think what we ought to do is have Tomas read those questions in the order that he finds them, and Kelly and I will do our best to answer them. Tomas, can you do that?
Yes. Hello, Central Catholic community. Can you hear me, Bruce?
Yep.
Perfect. All right, I'm going to go down the comments, and I'm going to go ahead and read the questions. So I got one brief one from Tammy of Wilkinson, and it was replied by Darren Davis. Thank you. But she said, so every Friday, they are out after lunch.
Yes. Yeah, so every Friday, the dismissal is 11:30. Yes.
So Kelly, on Fridays, is there a lunch on campus, or are they leaving?
They're leaving. If we are able, yeah, we're not providing... And the schedule allows for the students, the least amount of transitions we could do, where we have to monitor the students, where we have to keep them socially distanced and make sure, you know, all those things. So that was one less lunch for the school, so that was one reason. But with our seven periods we have to do, because we're a Catholic school, and we have that seventh period of theology that we have to fit in there, we don't have an even number of periods, so that's just how the rotation worked.
Right. But on those Fridays where we have mass, then dismissal will be after mass?
Yes, for the class, if we are limited to 100 students at that mass, and we invite, say, 100 students, whether we divide that by class or if it's whoever is in the cohort there that day, we haven't figured out exactly how we'll do that because we are limited to numbers. But those students could remain for an outdoor mass, and then everybody else would go home to stream live. We'd probably give a little bit of a delay so that people could get home.
Okay, so next question we have here from Pat. How will you be addressing the HVAC systems? Experts all agree filtration be increased and outside air increased. Additionally, they suggest the units be started two hours before and two hours after classes begin.
So go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. We were just working on this today. Sunny and his crew were working on an ionic unit that we fit onto our air conditioning systems in each classroom. And I don't have the statistics memorized, but I do remember every 30 minutes, 99.4, that's the one I remember, 99.4 of the viruses and bacteria every 30 minutes are circulated out of the room. So yes. So, yes, we would have those turned on before the students got here, if we're able to be back on campus with hybrid or full. We're still working on the details, if the, if that one that we were looking into works the best, but it seems that we found one that fits on our, our units. And it's an air purifier that would circulate that outside air back into the room, and, and purify all those things that we're concerned about for health.
Okay. Okay. And then, next question from Tammy. She says, losing two hours of in-class every week this year. I know things have to change for current situation, but when we are in class full time, they should be in class those other hours as well.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, we also have one here from Catherine. She asks, are there school-issued computers for students? And I can answer that, and right now, we don't have school-issued computers, but we require devices with certain specifications that we've shared out. If anybody needs those specifications, reach out to, I believe it's helpdesk@chsc.org, or info@chsc.org to get that information. And then the next question from Catherine is, are there school, oh no, sorry, that was the same question. Let's go down, from Roberta, will teachers be able to something the students during their remaining class time? Sorry, I'm wondering what the question was here. Roberta, if you can, I think maybe reiterate, I'm not sure what the question was there.
Let me, maybe I can, maybe I can help here. The, for the hour that the students are in class, whether they're at home or on campus, it's, the teacher is going to be available to the students the entire time, the, the entire time that the class is running. The teacher won't necessarily have his or her face on camera, won't necessarily be lecturing the whole time, but the teacher will be there the whole time, while the students are doing whatever asynchronous activity has been, has been planned, from the beginning to the end.
Can I, I, can I go back to, I think it was Tammy's question really quick? I just want to make sure that we answered this correctly. I know Bruce answered it, but I just want to make sure we're clear on this one. There could have been misunderstanding. The two hours of in-class every week, what she's referring to is, we used to have two hundred minutes per class per week. Now we have one hundred and eighty minutes per class per week. And so, we understand that that is less time than they were spending before, we, you know, and when we do return to a, as long as we have to do the safety protocols, we're going to keep with this schedule. But what we're also asking our teachers is to become Google Educator certified by September, so they have a little bit better grasp of the Google Suite, and that they, they incorporate somehow, something to make up for those twenty minutes per class per week, in some sort of blended learning model, project-based. So every subject and every, every class is going to look different. What that might, what that might look for a math class could be very different than what that looks like for a theology class. But the teachers are expected to have those minutes somehow make up in something like a more authentic learning experience, a project-based, a blended learning, a flipped classroom. We're doing professional development, all those kind of things, so our teachers will be ready to, and they do realize that, and I communicated that with them all summer, that, that there needs to be a plan, and will be, the next two weeks will be really working on that, and, and doing some professional development on how, how they can best fit that into their subject area. I just wanted to make sure that was answered, so, yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Kelly. Let's see, another question from Robert, what support is offered from IT standpoint? Who's available and how? I, I could say, I'm, I'm available again at the helpdesk@chsc.org email. I can't do too much in-depth support, but I can definitely give suggestions and take in any issues, or if there's any network issues, obviously, on campus, we'll, we'll deal with that too, on a case-by-case basis. Is there anything you guys want to add to that?
No, not, I mean, I think you, you covered it. You are, you are here for support, as, as much as you can give, to anybody who's having trouble. Yeah, and you, and you, you were in that role this spring too, weren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. And we're, do you feel you're successful?
Yes, I think so, even in a distance learning setting, I'm available for support as well.
Okay.
Okay, next question from Bill and Andrea, how well, or sorry, how will you be disinfecting the bathrooms?
That sounds like a question for our, our maintenance crew and Sunny, but we, they have been working tirelessly all summer, and we've been, we've been talking about traffic flows when the kids are back on campus, what kind of cleaning products that we need to use that kills the virus, all these things we've been talking about. So that, that's going to, the teachers again are responsible for cleaning their classrooms. Our maintenance crew, we have an amazing crew led by Sunny, and they will be cleaning the bathrooms. We're going to have extra wash stations around campus, so that, and, and there's a rule that only so many people can be in the, the bathroom with, that's limited to the amount of sink. So even if there's five toilets, if there's only two sinks, two students can go in, and then we're going to have washing stations outside the bathroom. So we, we thought this through, but that's really a, a, a question for Sunny, and I, and he's not here, so I can, I can get the answer to that, and get back to you on, on how often they need to do that. I know they've been looking into what the requirements are, and the health and safety considerations are. So I, I know we'll be doing it up to code, but I just don't know what those are. So I will, I can get back to that question, I just don't have an answer to that one right now.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And then from Mara, will there be many Christian service opportunities with many life events being canceled? Events the kids usually work at for hours?
Yeah, well, that's, that's a very good question, and, and I, I know that Mrs. Velazquez has, has a plan to make sure that the kids get their, get their hours in. And, you know, we're, we're, we're aware that there are fewer things going on where they, where they will have opportunities to, to say, work at, at a festival, or, or, you know, church, church festival, or something like that. We're, we're aware of that, and we're, we're working with Mrs. Velazquez to find those opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. One from, I got a question here from Wendy, once we are on campus, what is the earliest the students can be on campus? And also, the latest?
Yeah, so we know, we know that parents are, are going to need to be able to drop their kids off early, because they have to go to work and things like that. So I, I don't think, as far as, as far as a time, it, it will change from last, last year. Well, I'm on campus before seven every day, probably closer to six-thirty every day in the morning, and, and we, you know, I'll, I stay, well, I'm here right now, so I, I stay late, and there will always be, you know, I, I, I want to say that it's, that's not going to change, I don't think. We have to, we have to accommodate for that.
And there may be some limitations as to where the students can, can go, you know, if, if they're here, and we're allowed to have small group sessions with teachers, with wind time and stuff, and they're wearing masks inside, that's one thing. We, we'd probably have to limit how many students are able to use the library, because we have big round tables, and you can't sit facing each other inside a building, like students' desks have to be all facing the same way, they can't face each other. So there's, there will be certain guidelines and limitations, and there'll be extra supervision to make, make sure kids are socially distancing themselves when outside and things like that. So it might not look the same, but we're aware that that's something we need to accommodate.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And then a comment here from alumni Gabby Trejo, from Mr. Trejo, what can parents do to better facilitate this new process?
Wow, that's.
I have an answer for that.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, this, this mandate that came from the governor, that, that we're trying to follow to be socially responsibility, it's socially responsible to our community. When you're, when you're not at, when your students are not at school, please have them wear masks, have your family, encourage other people that are around to wear masks and enclose. When our numbers come down in the county, that's when we get to come back to school. So practicing social responsibility in this situation, that would be my suggestion, just because we want our kids back, and it kind of counts on us. What are we doing to keep this, to keep our numbers down? I would say for classes, set up a routine, make sure they are up, if they need, you know, if they need to be up at seven-thirty to get some breakfast, help them establish routines, hold them accountable, check in regularly, especially if they're, they're at home, and we're not able to do hybrid, or, or be back on campus. And Bruce, you may have something to add, but those, those would be my suggestions.
Well, I, I was, I was going to say, make sure you communicate with the teachers as much as possible. If, if you're having internet issues, can't log on, the, the sooner you can communicate that to the teacher, the better. So, you know, that, that would really be the only thing that I would add. Communication is key, and we're, we're telling our teachers the same thing, that it's critical that we, that we communicate.
Excellent. Thanks, Bruce and Kelly. Another question from Nate Meg, yeah, Nate Meg Mendez, what about dismissal on Mondays and Thursdays?
And I'm not sure, yeah, those are the days we have early dismissal, I'm, I'm not sure what the question is.
But yeah, maybe about pickup or something, because there's another question in there about, about if, if there's a work conflict and a parent can't come and pick, pick up. We, we definitely understand that, and we'll, we'll, we'll work with, work with you, and provide a safe place for your student on campus. If, if there are any issues with early dismissal, and you can't get them right away, that's, that's something that we are dedicated to, to addressing. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Let me see, next question from Andrea, I'm really sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting, is school beginning on campus or distance learning?
We will begin on campus if we can determine, with the help of the county health department, that it is safe to do so. If we determine that it is not safe to do so, we will, we will begin in a hybrid, or in a, in a distance learning mode. I wish I could give you a definite answer right now, believe me. If we were starting school tomorrow, we would start in a distance learning mode, let me put it that way, so.
Thanks, Bruce. This one should be a quick answer, so for Michael, will this presentation be distributed to parents for future reference?
Yes, we will, we, when we send out, we're going to send out a blast to the parents in the next couple days with a copy of this presentation, and with that health and, that health survey that everybody needs to, to turn in, it's going to be in the form of a Google form, that everybody needs to fill out for each student before, so, yes, we will be doing.
Excellent, thanks, Kelly. From Jenna, will the masses be streamed for parents to participate?
Yes. Yes, they will.
Excellent, thanks, Bruce. From Darren, will food service be available on campus when students are present?
So, yeah, that, we're, we're planning on having Marco, our, our chef out back there, provide food service. It might not look exactly the same as, as what we've had in the past, as far as the options for students to eat. There, there may be more of a kind of a, an individual packaging type of thing, to cut down on the handling of it. And we're also working on an app that the students can use to order, so they don't have to stand in line and try to decide what they want. They can order from a menu on an app, and it would be ready for them to pick up when, when they do that. That's, that's in the works.
Excellent, thanks, Bruce. From Tammy, when sports theoretically start in December, January, would practice begin early?
Early, you mean like, after school, like on, on early release days, would it start earlier?
I think she means like, can they start practicing, or, and we have, we have sports right now, following safety and health protocols. Us country's been working out, volleyball's working out, and they're following the protocols so that they can be on campus and do conditioning footballs here. So I think the answer is yes, though.
Yeah. Again, we're, we're following the county guidelines for that too, county and league and CIF guidelines for all that too.
Excellent, thanks, Bruce. Let me, sorry, I'm just getting back to my place here. Okay, so from Nathaniel Bray, see, will there be a limit to the amount of screen time for students? And they also continue to say, six hours per day for classes, and then research and homework on top of that becomes a lot of time in front of an electronic screen.
So, so I think what we're trying to do with the, with the classroom plan, when we're either distance learning, or if you're at home during the hybrid, is to break up the class meetings, so that the students don't have to stare at a screen the whole time, by having an, an opening monologue, or some, some kind of opening with a prayer, and maybe the objectives, or even a short lecture, and then have other types of activities that, that hopefully won't require staring at a screen for the whole sixty minutes. That's, that's the plan. So, you know, we hope that by breaking up those classes with the different components of the lessons, that, that we can, that we can reduce any kind of eye strain, or at least as, as much as we can.
Thanks, Bruce. And then a question from Michelle, when will we be notified regarding which cohort, cohort our child is assigned?
And we are working on that right now. Ms. Green and I are finishing up scheduling, putting everybody into the courses, there's still a couple of course changes coming in, requests. So, we're not quite done doing, dividing cohorts, because we're not done with scheduling. And we know that that's going to continue to change, but we want to have everybody in that's registered, which is, which we're, we're finishing up right now. So that should be next week, you'll find out, if we're able to open in a hybrid, what cohort your child will be in. So that, that's, that's coming up pretty quick, in the next few days.
Awesome, thanks, Kelly. And then I guess a related question from Denise, is who do we talk to about the cohort? Like which cohort they're assigned?
If you want to email Bruce or myself, if you have concerns about what cohort your child is placed in, but we will be posting that, like I said, we'll be assigning those in the next few days.
Okay, and thank you, Kelly. And the next question from Todd, is there an option to choose 100% distance learning?
Yes, one of the, one of the, one of the things that we're trying to do here is to create a situation where going forward at this school, with the use of this, you know, synchronous class strategy, and the cameras in the classroom, that any student who is home for any reason, will be able to attend class virtually, and, and, and get the, you know, the, the, hopefully, close to the same kind of experience that they have in the, in the classroom. So whether we are fully distant- So whether we are fully distance learning, whether we are in the hybrid model or whether we come back fully, but there is a concern for a student who might have a health issue, that will still be available going forward for, for the foreseeable future. So even, even when, when we have a vaccine and COVID-19 is, is in the, the mists of history, if a student has a sore throat or, or, you know, a fever, they can stay home and still attend class. That's, that's one of the, one of the things that we're trying to do with this, with this plan.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce. Another question, or sorry, a question from George. Could you explain if there will be time for clubs, Science Olympiad, et cetera?
Yeah. During distance learning, the clubs will be virtual. So it'll, it'll be, you know, one of those situations where as soon as, as soon as we get, kind of get rolling and figure out what kind of, what kind of schedule we can, we can do with, with the clubs. But because they're virtual, I think, because they'll, they might start out virtual, we can, we can say that, that there, there are lots of different times during the day that they could schedule meetings and, and things like that. But we want to continue to have those kinds of opportunities for our, for our students.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce. From Denise, are we going with the new dress code when on campus? Or can we, I think she's saying use last year's model.
So, go ahead.
I was gonna say, yeah, we are, we are still going forward with the, the new dress code. That's been, we put that out, I think almost a year ago. But we also understand with the crazy world we're living in right now, there's weird shortages of weird things. So if at all, for some reason you don't have the correct color polo at the beginning when we're going back and there's still, you know, shortage of getting things and things just aren't, aren't available, we're gonna be lenient and we're gonna work with families, absolutely. But yeah, yeah.
Thanks Kelly. And then Nate Meg's question, how will FFA be working during distance learning?
It's a good question. The, the ag classes that are required for students to be in FFA, of course, will be, will be on the schedule that the kids will be taking, taking. As far as activities with FFA, again, it's gonna just depend on, on, you know, our county FFA level, whatever, whatever it happens to be, the, or the regional level. I'm, I'm not exactly familiar with how, how that works. But I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna follow whatever guidelines we get from that organization as well as the, the county at that time.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce. Another question from Christina. When do you expect to know which model you will open with on the 17th of August?
Well, here's, here's what, how this goes. In order to open on campus, we have to be off the watch, the state's watch list. The county does have, has to be off the state's list for 14 days. So you can kind of do the math and, and figure that out.
Well, I, I, I'm hopeful that, that we will be able to at least entertain the idea of getting a waiver. But it's gonna be distance or it's gonna be hybrid and we realize we need to make a decision. And the diocese, Marion Graham, the, the director of Catholic schools is working hard on the behalf of all the Catholic schools, reaching out to the, the local health organizations and our county representatives to try to figure out if, if we know we're doing the, we're smaller schools and we know we can keep our kids safe and we can keep them distant and we can do the things that we need to do. You know, we're not a high school with 3,000 kids. Is there a way you would, you would entertain a waiver on our behalf? So it's looking like, like, like Mr. Sawyer said, if, if it was tomorrow would be distance because they're just not, they're not hearing that yet. But we are, we're working hard so, so that we can do that. So I'm being, I'd like to be optimistic that we can at least start with a hybrid. But we just don't know.
Thanks Kelly and Bruce. From Anna Maria, she has concerns if one student gets sick and wants to know what we're going to do in the, in that event.
So we shared a little earlier in our presentation, a a chart that came from the California Department of Health that, that is, is like, it lays out an action plan for, for several different scenarios, including if a student suddenly has a fever or is exhibiting some other symptom that is related to the symptoms that COVID has, we have an action plan. And then if, if a student, let's say a student does not, is not showing symptoms, but is reporting that they have been in contact with someone who has COVID, we have a plan for that. And then finally, if somebody has been tested positive for COVID, there's a plan for that too. And this will be, the, the, the plan is, what does the school do? And who do we communicate with about it? And, and all those kinds of things. So this is, this is coming from the, from the state of California. And we will, we will use that to, to make our decisions as to what to do.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce. From Wendy Thomas, the fall sports parent meeting is scheduled for Monday. Will this meeting still take place?
I saw Billy, Billy Hill, Mr. Hilla posted an answer to that, I think somewhere in there. But I don't see it right now. Do you see it Tomas?
Well, I think I see it actually, yes.
August 3rd, fall sports parent meeting will be postponed. We will send an email out later in the week. I just don't.
There we go.
Excellent. Thanks Billy. Let me see. I'm just gonna go past, there's a couple of questions that I think we've already answered here. From George, he's commenting, you guys are doing a great job with this ever evolving situation. Much, much respect or must respect. Thanks George.
Thank you, Mr. Marashi.
From Denise, on early dismissal days, are students able to stay on campus until parents can pick up due to work conflicts?
Yes, we, we will work with, with families in that regard. Yes.
Excellent. And then from Amber, who will be policing and enforcing these new requirements for PPE? Is this something that is going to fall on the teacher or staff? Just like the dress code, we all know how responsible our children are with dress code. A student doesn't have a mask, lose it or I think, let me see, yeah, just loses it. Will there be an additional PPE for them in the office?
We have decided that, that families and families need to provide their own face masks. So if a child shows up to school without a face mask, they will be put in and that, they won't be quarantined or make feel bad about it. But we'll have them not, they won't be able to attend class until if they drove themselves, they go home and get a mask or until a parent can bring them a mask. If we be, if we start getting into the business of providing masks for those that don't show up, well, we, we just want them to be responsible and bring their own masks, first of all. But we, we don't know if we can keep a supply big enough. What if we run out of masks and we promise that we can supply them? So we need students to be responsible to bring their own masks, have a couple extra in the car, have a, I have a couple extra, the medical reusable ones in my purse. You know, just the, the way things are right now, we just need to be prepared. And yes, if they, if they somehow lose it while they're on campus, we will, we will ask them to stay outside until a parent can bring them one. So.
So, so this is gonna be a real team effort by, by this school. We realize that we're, it's all hands on deck when it comes to monitoring the, the student behavior when it comes to health and safety. So it'll, it'll be a combination of the teachers, Ms. O'Connor, me, our dean, you know, our, our athletic director, our activities director, the office staff. Everybody is going to be involved in, in monitoring this. We have to.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce and Kelly. Another question or a question from Jeanette. Just curious if you know roughly how many students will be in the classroom at a time?
Well, we have, we have room for the mid twenties in a classroom and to still be able to do it under the social distancing guidelines. So how many it will be will depend on if we're back full time with everybody or if we're in a hybrid situation. So if it's, if it's a hybrid situation, our biggest classes might have 15 or 16, 20 at the most kids, depending on how well we can balance the classes. That's the way, that's the way that'll be. But we have room to have 25, 26 kids in a, in a classroom and still be able to meet the social distancing guidelines.
We also have a couple of overflow rooms, like bigger classrooms. What, what used to be the computer lab is much bigger and it can accommodate more students than that. We've even talked about if we have to move classes into the gym, we'll do that to keep our, to get our kids here on campus. We, I mean, I've heard teachers talk about different options of just moving their class outside on certain days. And I mean, if we can get the kids back on campus, we will find a way to, to make it safe and get them here. So.
Yeah. Thanks Kelly and Bruce. Question from Roberta that looks like it was answered by Lori, but we can see if we can expand on it. Will students have access to their lockers? And Lori Green answered, no lockers at this time.
Correct. No lockers at the time. So students will have to carry their books with them. And we, this brings up a very good point because we need to, we need to ensure that the students aren't sharing their books. If a student brings a book, that student uses that book and, and doesn't share it with anybody else. It's, it's just one of those things that, that we're gonna have to do. The thing about lockers is that it, it, it provides a place for students to congregate. And we're trying to control that, the ability or need for students to congregate together in close proximity. So we're not gonna use our lockers this year.
Okay. Thank you Bruce. From Jim, he's asking, will the hybrid schedule correlate with St. Stanislaus school's schedule?
I can answer that since I have a child that will be attending St. Stanislaus next year and I'm familiar with their schedule. If they, if they have a, if they go to a hybrid schedule, I believe, because they're an elementary school, that's something that's gonna be pretty temporary. It would be something just to transition back to campus full time. But the way that their, their hybrid schedule works is students will be either assigned to a Monday, Wednesday or a Tuesday, Thursday. So with our schedule rotating through two weeks and having like, for instance, the gold cohort in those two weeks will do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. It will, it will match up with their sibling next door one week, but it won't match up with the other. So our, we did consider doing the four days where you were just here Monday and Wednesday or, or Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday, but we thought that it would be in the best interest of our students if we could get them here five days a week and spread out those classes a little more. So it's not gonna necessarily correlate, but I, from my understanding, they're either gonna be distance or fully back with a very short period of a hybrid model from what Mrs. Holcraft explained in their town hall meeting.
Excellent. Thanks Kelly. And then a verification from Simba, wondering if we are doing distance learning until we are told otherwise? That's why we are going through online, at school and hybrid model?
Yes, not till we're, we're told otherwise necessarily, but until the leadership of the school can determine that it is safe to move into another phase. With the help of the county, the diocese and, and other entities that, that advise us.
Thanks Bruce. Another question, it looks like another verification from Lori. Can you explain the hybrid cohorts, please? In that model, do the cohorts rotate one week in person and one week remote with the same curriculum?
Yes. So again, because there's, there's gonna be webcams in the classrooms either for hybrid or distance learning. Students that are at, so if we're starting on Monday, that's when the gold group will be, if we're starting at the very beginning of the rotation, gold group will be that week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The exact, the, the half of the class, the blue cohort that's at home will be logging in with the gold group that is at school. And so will the, the student, the teachers will still be following that live check-in so that when it's time to, to break off, to do individual work or group work, they can, they can still be available for those at home through a chat room or something, but they might stop their live session, work, let the kids in the classroom work on something while the kids at home work on the same exact thing. So they're still getting six, six classes in a two week period. Half of them will be online and half of them will be in the classroom. So they're all following along and there's no days lost, in other words.
Excellent.
Oh, and sorry, one more thing. And then the teachers may have a concern like, well, when do I do assessments then? And that might be an exception. If there's half the class in the, in, that, that's getting a test or an assessment on one day, they might have the kids that are at home login real quick and just say, hey, you took the, the test yesterday, here's your assignment for the day. We're not gonna have a live session really at all today. We're just gonna pray together, check in to make sure everything's okay, but you need to do that assignment that I already let you know you're gonna do or you're gonna take the test tomorrow. So this is what you need to do today while your classmates are taking a test in class. So that might be a situation where it's not exactly doing the same thing to accommodate for tests and quizzes and things like that.
Excellent. Thanks Kelly. I have a question from Barrel and they're asking, they're just asking about water polo. What's the status on water polo?
Um, well, I'm, I, the last two years I was the water polo coach. And this year I'm, I moved from less of a part-time position to more of as assistant principal. So I, I told Billy that I wouldn't be able to coach anymore and I, and I know that he's, he's actively seeking a coach. I do know that the pools, just from the club scene and what the Modesto City Schools are doing, it's a matter for that sport, it's a matter of when the pools are gonna be open for kids to practice in. So Billy would be able to answer that question, Mr. Hill will be able to answer that question if he has more updates on that. So I don't know if he responds in the chat down low, down more, or if he can email that parent Barrel guy.
It looks like we do have a response from Billy. I didn't see that one. He says, water polo probably won't begin practice until December.
Yeah, it's, it's the pool situation. It's just one of those things. All summer, the club water polo teams were never able to work out all summer long. So it's, it's a bummer, bummer for those aquatics programs.
Thanks Kelly. Another question from Stacy, does it matter what type of mask the students wear?
We're gonna, we're gonna leave that up to the families to decide what, what kind of mask their child should wear. I know there are guidelines that, that the CDC and the county, even the county health department has guidelines for, for those kinds of things. But the school is not going to require a particular mask.
Excellent. Thanks Bruce. I have a question here, inquiring about girls' golf from Kellen. How about girls' golf? I have an incoming freshman who would like to be on the team. Will they be practicing or having a tryout? And it looks like Billy responded to that one as well. And he answered, I don't envision tryouts as we would like to keep everyone, I think he's saying, safe. Official practices won't start until March 15th, but they will probably have a few workouts in the fall as well. Then we got a question from Javier. Who do we talk to about scheduling siblings? Then we got a question from Javier. Who do we talk to about scheduling siblings?
Well, we, we will, we, you don't need to reach out to us and ask us if siblings can be together. We are gonna make an effort to keep siblings together. That's, that's the priority of keeping, um, kids in the same cohort. Um, it would just be if there's a commuting issue or some other extenuating circumstance that you would need to be in a cohort with someone for, for commuting reasons or something. But again, we're not entertaining just friends wanting to be together. Right now.
Good question and good answer. Thanks, Kelly. Um, we've got another one from Beth here. If lockers aren't going to be used this year, then will students be able to go to the cars to exchange books during transition times?
So if I'm not wrong, I think about half of, uh, half of the classes have, have, uh, ebooks. Um, and go ahead, Kelly. You probably know more than I do about that.
Our science department pretty much, um, I think all, almost all of our science, I can't say all of them, have, have ebooks. Um, there's a couple of options in other departments to get an ebook. Um, but we're gonna be working with teachers to make sure, and there's some classes where teachers really would like kids to be able to bring textbooks because, um, initially when we were coming back all full with everybody here on campus, we were telling families and teachers, no textbooks on campus. They can't carry around all those books all day if we don't have lockers. Um, so we're still working on, on how that's gonna work if, if, if there's a balance where it's only the theology teachers and the math, um, well, not even all the math have books. They have packs. Some of them have packets and other things. So we'll, we'll figure that out so that it's not too heavy of a, a backpack to, to lug around and figure out if we can come to a, a, a balance on that. We're not, we're, we haven't figured that one out completely yet because we were initially saying no textbooks for that, sorry, that very problem.
Alright, thanks, Kelly. Uh, question from Daniel regarding students inability to wear masks due to medical exemption. How will the school accommodate that scenario to allow students to be on campus?
Everybody has to wear a mask. So if, if there's a student that can't wear a mask, they would, they would be doing distance learning.
Yeah, and we're, we're looking into that with the diocese. All of this, um, all of these decisions, like we keep referring to the county health and all these things, but if we really follow the guidance of our bishop, we're a Catholic school, our Catholic schools office and our bishop, um, and we had that same concern with students who have, um, who have the inability to wear masks due to a medical condition, how, how will we approach that? So we're still working on that, but right now it's everybody wears a mask. Um, yeah, so.
Thanks, Kelly and Bruce. Uh, question from Elizabeth, will students still be allowed to drive off campus for lunch?
No. Sorry. Not, not until we, not until we get the, um, the, the clear to be a little bit back to normal. As long as we're having to do all these health and safety precautions, um, we're suspending the, the off-campus lunch for seniors. So.
One of the, one of the issues with that is just that, you know, if we're, if we're going to be good stewards, um, of, uh, of the health of our community, uh, we need to cut down, uh, cut down on the number of opportunities for transmission. And so by, by, uh, keeping them here, I believe we're cutting down on those opportunities.
Excellent. Thanks, Bruce and Kelly. Another question from Gabby Trejo. Uh, does the school qualify for the free face coverings provided by Stanislaus County?
We actually will be getting some supplies free from the state, I believe, not the county. Um, and it's, it's not enough to, to say that we can, to provide them for all the students from what we understand right now. If that changes and we're able to provide what they are going to, to distribute to our school, then we can amend that and say we can provide like one or two masks per kids. But right now, we're unclear on the numbers that we're gonna be provided. Um, so, so we don't wanna promise that until we really know, but we, we will be getting some supplies from the state.
Excellent. Thanks, Kelly. I have a question here from Tammy. Uh, we have heard that Ripon Christian, Modesto, Modesto Christian, uh, August thirteenth and Trolaw Christian are starting on campus. How would we be different than them?
Well, I, I guess I can address, I, I, I hope I already have kind of, kind of addressed that. Um, I have heard lots of talk from, from other um, secular schools that, uh, you know, there's a First Amendment issue here. Um, um, you know, we, we don't receive, uh, state money, uh, so we should be able to do whatever we want. And, uh, my, my response to that is that, like I said in, in my, in my opening, uh, we have a responsibility for each other. Um, and just because we may have the right to do something, um, doesn't necessarily mean that we should. And I want to go into this with eyes wide open and understanding that we do have a responsibility to our community to make sure that everyone is safe, from the teachers to the office staff, to the students and to the families that the students go home to. Um, and so the, that, that, in my opinion, is what makes us different from them.
Excellent. Thanks, Bruce. Um, I'm just skimming down because there's a lot of questions that we went over, but there's one from Todd that maybe we can verify. Does CCHS need to get a waiver to open the hybrid model? If a waiver is not received, will we begin with the one hundred percent model?
Yes, to get, to get kids back on campus, whether it's hybrid or all full, we need, we need to, we need to get that, that waiver from the county. Um, and until we get word that we can come back hybrid or full, then, um, the plan is to, to do the distance learning model, but, um, we're still working on trying to do that. But yeah, that is what we would need to do if, if they don't entertain a waiver before the start of school.
Excellent. Thanks, Kelly. Um, question from Robert, uh, fall picture day is currently scheduled for, I think that's September sixth and September seventh. Is that still a go currently?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know, but we'll, we can certainly check on that.
Can you repeat the question? I'm finally figuring out how to follow along to these comments.
Uh, it's from Robert.
Oh, for the fall picture day. Oh, um, yeah, we don't know that yet. I'm sorry.
And then a good tech question from DeeDee, using Zoom, will you allow a call-in option if, when we have, uh, connection issues? And this is, this is something that Zoom has a feature for. Um, I'd have to look into the, uh, the security aspects of it in terms of can, if you give somebody the number for it, can anybody call in? Um, I think for that reason, we may wanna, uh, try to avoid doing that. Um, but that's definitely something we could talk about, uh, when we're doing our tech PD, whether we should make that available or not. Um, let's see. And then for verification to Jeanette, um, she said she missed the question about, uh, what kind of mask to wear. So do we have a, she asked?
Yeah, as long as it's, it's a cloth mask or they can, you can use those, uh, single-use medical masks, um, whatever. Um, the, the child is most comfortable, as long as it's a face mask, it covers the nose and the mouth. Um, as, and as long as there's not inappropriate images on it, you're good to go. So I'll have to not allow that.
Excellent. Thanks, Kelly. And then from Nate Meg, is there any sort of freshman orientation day before school actually starts?
Yes, August thirteenth, I believe, right, Bruce? August thirteenth is gonna be the day. Um, um, Mrs. Paris is, is already working with the ASB officers and the ASB commissioners right now to, um, figure out how we can get them in small groups because we're allowed to do small groups and give them tour throughout the campus. So it would be rotating students on Au- August thirteenth. Um, and she'll be sending that information out as soon as she gets it all organized. Um, where students would come in a small group, be led by an ASB, and they'll, they'll remain outside. They need to bring masks just in case, um, just in case they need them. But yeah, there's gonna, as long as we can distance them and keep them outside, um, they're gonna get, um, it's gonna be different than in the past, but they're gonna get some on-campus, um, time to meet some teachers and to, and to see the campus and everything.
Thanks, Kelly. Then the last question I'm seeing on here so far from Lisa. Um, will seniors have any senior activities outside of school or on school?
Boy, we hope so. Um, that's, that question's hard to answer. Um, and I guess the answer would be a lot like, um, some of the other ones that we've given. It, it sort of depends on um, what kind of activity, uh, and whether or not we can do it uh, while maintaining social distancing and all those different, uh, different protocols. Um, I, I sure hope so. I want to. Um, it's a huge, huge part of our school. Uh, those activities, it, uh, it brings us together, um, builds family. Um, kids get to know each other. Uh, so we're, we are, yes, we are, we are planning to do activities to the extent that we can.
Yeah, and, and we really wanna keep with like, like Bruce mentioned in that slide about it was under the, the Catholic identity. Um, keeping with celebrating holy days together and mass and retreats and it, and we'll find a way to make them work with the, the conditions we're, you know, we're giving. So the out, um, giving priority to not trying to, I mean, the traditions have to change because we can't do what we used to do with a lot of these things, but, but making it work with, um, you know, if it needs to be virtual, if we get smaller groups together and we do different things and we can keep them outside. We wanted, we want to do a lot of that. And, um, I, I know that, uh, Mrs. Paris, who's in charge of the student activities, um, she, she wants that too. So she's gonna be working hard to make that, that a reality for all of our students, not just our seniors.
Excellent. Thanks, Kelly. And a question answered by our own Teresa Huber. Um, from Teresa Martin Perez, any idea about senior picks? And Teresa responded, not sure if they're still doing senior portraits appointments. Uh, Mrs. Green will know. So you guys wanted to?
Maybe keep posted on that because I'm, I have no idea about senior portraits on that one either. That could be something that we look into and get back to. Um.
And I, I see a question from Denise Halverson, uh, asking, uh, for another family, but, uh, will we be enforcing masks outside the classroom? It kinda depends. Um, there, there will be hopefully opportunities where kids can take their masks off. Um, it's, it's a long day with a mask, believe me. I, I, um, I, I know how, how everybody feels about that. Uh, so we're, we're trying to build in extra time in our, uh, passing periods so that, uh, so that our students can, uh, take their masks off, get a breath of air. Um, uh, again, uh, as long as we're following those social distancing guidelines.
Yes, those, those fifteen-minute, um, passing periods, um, not only for the teachers to clean the classrooms, but for the, the kids to get outside, get relief from their masks, as long as they're keeping their distance and that, and we understand that's gonna be a lot of supervision on our parts. Um, but, but if that's what we need to do to get the kids on campus, um, yeah. We'll do it.
Excellent. Uh, I think we have one last question so far from Brad. Uh, will you have a leadership class and/or freshman class officers?
There will be virtual, um, freshman class officer elections, absolutely. Um, we were able to do those for the class officers over the summer for sophomores, juniors and seniors. So, um, Mrs. Paris already has the, that all dialed in on how we could do that, even if we're at the distance model. Um, and we do have a leadership class, the, uh, ASB leadership class for sophomores, juniors and seniors who are either officers or applied to be commissioners. Um, and we have that, a, a couple of periods uh, built into our master's schedule with Mrs. Paris. So, yes.
Okay. And that looks to be all the questions that we've got as of this moment.
So we wanna, we wanna thank you all and, and we know there might, may be some more questions. Um, you may have friends who weren't able to, uh, to attend this that, that might have questions in the future. Kelly and I are always available, um, through, through email, or if you wanna come down and talk to us. Um, we're, we're here, um, during the day and, uh, we'll be wearing our mask and hope you will too. Um, if you wanna come down and talk to us in person, know, please, that we want to open as badly as you do, but we, we wanna do it responsibly and safely. Um, and we think we have a good plan, no matter what, um, um, mode we're in. Uh, we think we, we, we know we have to be better than last year. And we also know that we have to be better than the public school. Um, and, and the other, the other private schools too. And I, I think, I think the plan that we have put together and the technology uh, to support it, uh, and the teachers, uh, to implement it, uh, we think we have, uh, uh, what it takes to have a great school year. And, uh, and, um, you know, we're working hard to get our students to uh, college in heaven. That is our goal. And we're gonna continue doing that. This, uh, uh, the situation we find ourselves in is temporary. We know that, but our commitment to Catholic education is, uh, is forever. It's ongoing. And, uh, we, I, I just want everybody to know that, that we're doing the best we can. We're not perfect, but we're gonna get through this. So, thank you very much. And, uh, we'll see you, uh, on campus as soon as we can.
Thanks, everybody.